Great, hello, welcome. Can I please get a motion to come back into the session? Motion by Rory, seconded by Ilana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. Great, thank you. So, welcome. Tonight is Thursday, June 20th. We're really excited for tonight's meeting. We have some excellent presentations. We're going to hear about DEIB. DEIB, sorry. And we are going to talk again about our conversation continuing about Shady Lane and LES. And I'm looking forward to that discussion. And we have an exciting appointment that we're going to do in just a moment, but if, before we begin, can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to our ally of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. So, we're super excited for tonight. We have big things happening. And if we could, before we move to the first set of presentations on our appointment, if we could just do some quick board announcements, I just wanted to acknowledge our high school staff and Steven Siciliano for graduation on Tuesday. It was really a wonderful, wonderful ceremony, just such a wonderful feeling of camaraderie and connection and care for our students. And I've had multiple people comment on what a really nice ceremony was and what a great feeling they got about our schools and our high schools. So, congratulations to Steven and his team for really creating a special event for our graduating seniors. So, thank you. Any other words? Okay, great. Without further ado, the first item on our agenda this evening is item 8.01, which is an opportunity for us to appoint the next superintendent of the Catona Lewisboro School District. And there is no bigger responsibility for a Board of Education than choosing the leader for the district. And we took that very seriously, and we're very thrilled to have the opportunity to interview and meet Ray and Dr. Ray Blanch, who we are going to make a resolution to appoint. Ray comes to us with an extensive background as a superintendent, both in the state of Colorado and right next to us in Somers. And we were incredibly impressed in everything that he talked about. It was so easy to see the students through his, through his vision. We could see the students, the care that he has for them, his insistence on having their voice be a part of the decisions that happen in a district. He's been able to implement things in the Somers District that I think are aspirations for our district in terms of foreign language and pre-K and embedded honors and lots of things that really give students opportunities to find their best selves and do that in a way that is inclusive and gives them an opportunity to challenge themselves and see what they can achieve. And he speaks really so from his heart about making sure that every student throughout their education doesn't have a point in time where they feel like their options have been closed, that the limits are never there for them, that they always have opportunities to continue to explore what they can do and how far they can go. So, we feel really thrilled to have him join us. And if someone would like to move item 8.02, we can, we can move by Marjorie, seconded by Rory. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
If I could vote tonight also, I would. They don't let me vote. But Ray, Dr. Blanch, and I have worked together very closely for the last nine years. I've learned a lot from him in that time. We work very closely at the local chief school administrators' meetings on a very regular basis. He's widely admired in that group, and I think the Board has made an excellent selection, knowing Ray as I do. I know he's only going to take the work that we've done our best to move forward in the last nine years and move it that much further forward. He's widely respected and deservedly so in the region, and the Board has made an excellent choice. So, thank you for that on behalf of all the students and staff of Catona Lewisboro, and congratulations to Ray.
I was going to just make a few remarks.
I was a little nervous there. I thought they were going to give you your vote, and you weren't. So, thanks, and I can rest now. The same thing, Andrew. I am just so excited about coming to Catona. And the Catona Lewisboro School District under your leadership is just in such a wonderful place. And hopefully, I got a chance to meet some of my future teammates, and the energy is there as you described. And so, being able to come part, part of that piece, and then with the collective Board. I know it's been a little time since I had a chance to meet with you, but again, when I left my experiences too, I went out of those experiences walking on water. It just was amazing. And then that morning, actually, the next morning, I had to get up and I came to the last chance I was going to meet with the Board. I didn't, I didn't realize this, but I walked out and I had to turn back and go to my house and grab something I had forgotten. And I turned around, and there were two baskets. My wife hangs flowers on the front. She's always done this every year. I don't think she attended this, but it was two beautiful, huge, purple baskets of flowers hanging. I should have known then that it was there. But I came home, and I saw them, and I said, okay, this is going to be, this is meant to happen. And I really, really can tell you that the only place that we can do is continue to move forward with our children here in Catona School, Lewisboro, and with the fact that you have such commitment from the community that I have seen. And again, as Andrew said, just neighbors next door for many, many years, and we've talked on many things. The commitment that the Catona Lewisboro School District provides from the children to the families, to the businesses, to the school district, to this new project you have going is our examples all over the place, where we are putting our best foot forward for our children because they are the future. They're going to make the difference for us and don't know exactly what it will bring them, but I know we will make sure they're prepared to take on whatever challenges that come their way. Wherever they decide to go, whatever the pathways that they lead, they must be prepared to find the next best steps moving forward. And so, the Board support, Andrew has spoken so highly of your Board of Education over the years that it is hard not to miss. That is a reputation frankly you have in our area of the quality of your Board of Education as well as the quality of your educational staff and faculty, your leadership team, your support staff, just even when I came in the building today, your support staff members greeted me. Hi, how are you doing? Where can I help you? That just doesn't happen by accident. So, Andrew, I know that comes right from your office and your space where every person is seen and cared for in the school district. So, I hope I can add to that. And again, I can't wait to get started to be your next superintendent. And so, I'm just going to go ahead and if it's all right officially, I'm going to see if I can get some of those purple ties from you. They're not as easy as they are to find. You can mark those up a little bit because they're not as hard to find. Thank you everybody so much, and we'll be talking soon. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. So, thank you, and we're going to move on to our DEIB presentation.
Yep, sure. Thank you. So, tonight, as we've done annually now for a number of years, or at least since our Board adopted the policy that encourages us to bring an annual update to the Board, tonight we're going to give an overview update of the work this year towards diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in all of our schools. I'm going to take turns with our Assistant Superintendents, Julia and Neil and Alex, and we're each going to present a few of the slides tonight. Tonight is a little bit more of a high-level overview by design than in prior years, but we think it makes sense for the work that we've done this year. So, as we have in the past, due to the nature of this work, we start with this word humility because this is not something, the work of DEIB is not something that we come in and fix. It's, it's work that we'll be doing forever. It's work that's embedded in human nature. It's work that's embedded in trying to raise consciousness and in changing behaviors and in its complicated, necessary, and ongoing work. So, we put it particularly at the beginning of a PowerPoint presentation because I'm always concerned that a PowerPoint presentation can give the impression that we think we've done a fantastic job here and it's done. And we think we've done some good work, but it's not done. There's lots more to do, and there will always be lots more to do. So, that's why we start with that slide that speaks to humility. The agenda tonight, we're going to review quite a bit of the DEIB work that's happening in our schools, I think the Board will see tonight. In a similar way to some of the sustainability that we talked about earlier in the year, this work now has a certain momentum that's propelling it forward within the schools. And then later on in the slides, we're going to talk about the role of our ERJC, the Equity and Racial Justice Committee. This is the Board's policy that was adopted back in June of 2022, so two years ago now. And we want to acknowledge the importance of this policy in driving our work forward. There are several bullet points that you see there in the middle of the page. You'll hear some of those bullet points spoken about directly tonight in terms of budgetary commitment and some of the hiring practices, some of the review of policies that's been ongoing. But we want you to know that these bullet points are driving our work all the time and that the nature of this work, again, it's ongoing. It's embedded in the daily review when we, when we walk into classrooms, when we have meetings together, we're thinking about the work through an equity lens, through an inclusive lens. So, the policy is a really important piece of that. We appreciate the Board's passing of that policy two years ago and its ongoing support for the work. And then another thing that we think is very important, which is something that Board and we hope community and staff are very, very familiar with at this point, is this symbol which indicates our learning commitment at the center and then three areas that for us are very, very important and integral to the daily work that we do. And you see here, DEIB is right there along with SEL and sustainability. And the more we do the work over time, we see how, you can't do one without the other, actually, that they are all completely intertwined, that there are DEIB components to sustainability as well as SEL, and there's DEIB components to SEL and vice versa. So, they're all entirely intertwined, which is why when we designed that image, we tried to blur the lines of those colors as best we could to show that they all carry over into the other. And maybe most importantly, we continually put this in front of our staff when we have meetings together, when we have opening of school year meetings, when we have faculty meetings, to remind ourselves that this is embedded in all of our work all the time. So, now I'm going to turn over to Julia, who's going to talk a little bit more concretely and specifically about some of the work happening in our schools.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julia.
You're welcome. So, beginning with our elementary schools, you'll see a theme of belonging threaded throughout the year. And this started with the Administrator's Book Read last summer, excuse me, Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity. And it has, belonging especially as a theme, has trickled throughout the year as it reads in the morning meetings, but also these monthly guides that the principals have provided for the school outlining what books they'll be reading as well as what focus they will have for each month, the assemblies that correspond with those, encouraging students to visit the bulletin boards that have been established, the compact teams, the PTOs are integrating to really provide a supportive partnership in this work that includes building these bulletin boards, helping fund some of these assembly programs, which has been a really beautiful partnership. And these compact teams that are on each school in the district, but particularly here in the elementary schools focusing on DEIB, really, really demonstrate this partnership, as I said, with the learning experiences as well as the resources that we've been able to provide. So, on the subsequent slides, you'll see some photographs of some of the things that have outlined, beginning with the start of the year and identity work and what is in a name in a student. And then the next slide shows some of the assemblies that we've been fortunate enough to have. I've attended some of those. Wonderful experiences for the students that were possible, made possible with partnership with the PTOs as well. And then the secondary school level, here we have our BEAM and BEAT teams. BEAM is Belonging and Equity at the Middle School, and BEAT is Belonging and Equity Task Force at the High School. Both teams include students, staff, and families, which is wonderful, a wonderful partnership. In some cases, district staff who also represent families. Thank you, Alex. And you'll see some examples throughout this presentation of events that they helped make possible. The circles work that you've seen and heard about throughout the year, both the community circles and restorative circles, has been work that we are working actively to grow throughout the district, have done a great deal of work. You'll hear a little bit more, I'll mention community circles in a moment, but restorative circles is something that has been in place for quite a while at the high school and is growing to the middle school. And this year, we've been very deliberate about that. Just earlier this week, I was able to join the middle school for their Tier Two Professional Development Training on Introduction to Creating a Culture of Care and Using Restorative Practices in that regard, which is really exciting. The community reads have a DEIB focus, like the 57 bus this past summer, as will the community reads at this upcoming summer. A number of clubs that we've mentioned, clubs like Saga are really important to note have been around for many years, but students are supporting and honoring DEIB in these, in these clubs and beyond. Some new and evolving practices are the cultural celebrations. The BEAT team ran theirs this year. You'll hear about this later on in the presentation as well, but really positive feedback about those, and I've heard wonderful things from the students and staff. We'll be posting a video link on our website later that you'll hear about from the BEAT team at the high school, talking about the celebration and the impact it had on them. There was also one at the middle school this year. Lee-John Jay, you know about, but they also ran circles and the community ones for the freshmen this year to help them adjust to the, to the high school and get acquainted with both the school and one another. And it made deliberate efforts to be as inclusive as possible, inviting more students to be a part of opening up their conferences for more students. African-American History was a new course. They'll be running two sections of it next year. I'm told during the senior exit interview, several students referenced it as a, as something they were really appreciative of having. And then the science pathways, you've heard all about that at a previous presentation. But we see this as another example of DEIB in a little bit of a different way, when we're, when we're creating science experiences for all, not just some, and by virtue of doing that, creating a high-quality foundation for everybody and then more ability to access our highest-level science classes, which is exciting as well. So, the, the next slide is some more photographs regarding some of this work from the cultural celebration as well as the middle school. Coach Day up there on the, on the top left, that was an ELA connection to the, the sixth graders had read Long Walk to Water, and they got to meet him and hear about his experience in Sudan. Really, really interesting. And then the next slide talks a little bit about some of the district-wide work that has happened this year, and I'd like to give some more credit to my colleague, Alex Casabona, for the work that she's done to support ENL families in specific, which she'll be speaking on the next slide, and I'm sure can elaborate on, on these events that she's helped spearhead along with the team, but have really, those are deliberate efforts to help engage every member of our school community in a meaningful way and give them access to our great programs. And has also been a little bit of an outgrowth of a partnership we have with the Catona Community Center. We were hearing some feedback, and this was some ways that we responded to that, so I was really proud to, to see that. Our ongoing support for the Curriculum Integration Leaders, I've talked to about those folks. We have one in each level, elementary, middle, and high. They've done a great job of supporting the work, helping provide both resources and training for everybody. And then the final three bullets, Andrew referenced them earlier in the presentation when he pulled up the policy, because we're, we're making sure that we meet all the aspects of the policy. So, we have budgetary support for our workshops and trainings for staff and PD in this area, like the RJ Ed Restorative Justice Education Program I referenced a few moments ago. Hiring, I've partnered with Neil in this work, but also have seen and heard him speak to it on numerous occasions, that we ask for, for candidates familiarity with culturally responsive and sustaining practices when we're screening them and interviewing them. People participating in interview committees need to watch a video to help them be culturally responsive in their practice and understanding their own biases potentially in a hiring process. And then Neil also participates in the Lower Hudson Council Diversity Hiring Fair on a regular basis. So, well done.
A lot of normals.
And finally, policies reviewed through an equity lens. And one example of that is changing pronouns throughout all of our policies and making other deliberate decisions to be more culturally responsive. And with that, I'll turn it over to Alex to tell us more about data and outcomes.
Sure. So, in terms of data and outcome, the first slide that we have speaks to the State Performance Plan indicators. And these are just some markers to look at how we fare in terms of disproportionality. And these are state-run reports that are run based on the data that is reported through the district beds code. And this year, if we go to the next slide, you'll see that in terms of all of their reports for 2324, which is based on last year's data, we, there was no discrepancy found in terms of the rate of suspension for students from diverse and different backgrounds, the rate of placement in terms of the programs that we're in, identification for those students that are classified. So, it speaks to that we're really offering similar opportunities and support to students so that we're not over-classifying or disproportionately spending or placing students of diverse backgrounds disproportionately. So, we feel that that speaks to the work that our principals are doing within their buildings and ultimately the work that our teachers are doing within their classrooms to really create those supportive environments and provide students with exactly what they need. Separately, when we think qualitatively, we know that the middle school, well, I'm on the next slide, sorry. The middle school piloted this year a school-wide belonging survey that was adapted from the text that Julia referenced that we had read as an administrative team. So, that pilot led to conversations really district-wide about how you measure belonging in schools, how you think about school climate, and how that plays out in students identifying. That was actually in addition to the questions that were recently added to the John Jay High School senior and graduate surveys so that we could think about what that looks like for our students that are here and when they leave the district, how they reflect on their experience and their time with us.
Thank you, Alex. Maybe just before we move to the next section, Alex said all that really well. And additionally, we acknowledge that this is one small slice of data that's looking particularly at the intersection between students with disabilities, race, and ethnicity, discipline. The policy asks us to look at data in a wider variety of ways. We know that. You're going to see on a slide later on, we commit to continuing to grow in that area. It is a growth area for us, and we're already starting to think about some ways to do that in the coming year. So, but thank you for that, Alex. And now we're going to turn to Neil.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So, right here, you can see this is a screenshot of our diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging portion of the website with, thanks to Lenore and many other folks. It's replete with beautiful pictures around what's going around each one of our five schools and just connected to the wheel of DEIB and SEL. In addition, this is a link that's going up very soon. I want to really thank Dr. Siciliano and Mallory McDonald, Assistant Principal at the high school, who have started with student support and voice BEAT, which I think Julia had mentioned earlier, Belonging Equity Action Team, I think it is, or Task Force. Yes. But it's, it's really a group that's driven by student voice, and this is the, the committee that really was, that led the way for that cultural celebration in the high school cafeteria not too long ago. But this video is now posted, I think, for the Board to see, and the members of BEAT wanted to come tonight, they just couldn't make it. So, instead of coming here in person, they decided to make this wonderful video and just a little bit about their experiences at high school and also just what BEAT has meant to them and what the cultural celebration meant to them as well, just being able to, not just the foods, but the people that came to that cultural that was really an entry point for students and celebratory of, of many different cultures. So, thanks to BEAT and Mallory and Steven for that. So, pivoting to ERJC, which we, we call an acronym for Equity and Racial Justice Committee, is now in its fourth year. We just finished its fourth year, and it's in, and Marjorie's here as a board liaison, and those of us who were able to attend know it's a nice mixture of students, parents, teachers, administrators, and support staff as well. And during those meetings over the last few years, it should be said that there's a lot that we talk about and a lot of really lively and powerful dialogue and that our educators and our administrators are able to be there in person and hear from parents and from students. And a lot of what's said is, I would say, emerges, emerges into the schools and how our principals think about the experiences of students and what they might be doing, partially also due to this kind of cross-pollination of schools being able to share some of their practices with one another and also having students and parents really share their insight and their perspective and show really, I'd say, insightful and powerful ideas of what we could be doing. And as Andrew said, there's a lot we're doing and a lot more needs to happen, but there is a lot of like power and agency within this group, and we listen very carefully. Just a little more detail there, we do start the meetings by checking in with each school and what's going on, and we check in with anyone who would like to participate. That includes students and parents. We are having some greater outreach to make sure that students know they're welcomed and even making sure that we pause as adults in the conversation to say, wait, hold on, we have students here. Let's make sure we specifically ask the students to speak up because that can be an intimidating situation with 15, 16, 20 adults. And here we have some brave high schoolers who are there and have this on their heart and on their mind to speak. And when they speak, it is just so powerful. And I think we're thinking with the students, and actually, we had a conversation with Shina somewhat recently about what we could do more to bring in students and advertise a little bit better and understand what it is that ERJC actually does and that students and their voice are really wanted on that committee. So, we have some, some great ideas going forward. We are able to share experiences from each of the schools, and I would say it's an opportunity for parents and students and staff to share. But we also hear from our, our students and parents from marginalized racial and ethnic backgrounds who don't always have a great experience, and we really listen carefully, and it's very heartfelt conversations. And I would say some of those, a lot of those conversations, they don't just sit there in ERJC, they become to live in the schools and serve as kind of a fuel for the administration to think differently about our schools and creating the conditions for belonging at each school. And our belonging is the feeling of, do you feel valued? Do you feel seen? Do you feel heard? And what more can we do as a district and as a school to ensure that we're, that every student has a sense of belonging? Our compact teams, so we mentioned BEAT. BEAT, I think, is a form of a compact team because it does include students and parents, but also at each one of our elementary schools, our principals are there, do a beautiful job, as well as the middle school with BEAM, I think it's called, meeting with students as, as well as some parents, and to think about how to set those conditions for belonging so that, for example, great examples live on the website of some of the bulletin boards that have been created, and some I can just think of, say, you belong here and faces of different people from around the world. Indigenous Peoples' Day was celebrated. There's a lot that's on that website, and compact teams are able to share what they're doing at ERJC and really just a lively exchange of ideas. We've done some learning together, and we always do the learning together. And recently, I had, just very grateful for the opportunity to lead a session on, inspired by courageous conversations around race, and knowing that race can be a really difficult and fearful topic for people to talk about. And so, creating norms around that and, and thinking about our own stories and, and also kind of inspired by Yolanda Sealy Ruiz, I think her name is, and she really talks about the archaeology of self and excavating who you are and unearthing who you are and that self-critical look at who you are and how you bring yourself to work and how you bring yourself around to community and how we show up in the world and how we can just become more reflective. And if, the theory is, is that if you don't know yourself and you don't know your own story, you're going to have a much more difficult time connecting with other people. So, I think we're looking at that work, and I see Ingrid here in, in the audience, and we have some plans to think about ERJC going forward and to continue thinking about that learning. And also, the, the last point there, I'm sorry, we've had absolutely thought about considering community engagement and what that actually looks like, engaging our community partners, everything from Carimore to the library, to, to businesses. I think that's going to be an ongoing future discussion.
Neil, just before we jump, thank you for all that. Really well said. And I just want to also give a little, I know, I'm going to be the one to give the historical perspective. The ERJC is in its fourth year. So, the first year was the 2021 school year, and I want to remind the Board that all of those, all the work that Julia spoke of happening in the schools wasn't happening in that year. And in that year, And in that year, ERJC was a large group that met entirely virtually. We had a consultant from the outside. Some of our trustees will remember, at the end of that year, there was a long list of recommendations made to the board. Among those recommendations were, a board policy should be adopted, and it has been. Another recommendation was there should be committees at every school level. And now, took a couple of years to get there, but we're really proud to be able to say there are. And now those committees are moving a lot of this work forward. There were recommendations about looking at policies. There were recommendations about curriculum reviews. You, you heard about an African-American history course. We know that a year or two ago, our English department here at the high school took a very serious look at the literature that it's teaching. So that work's been going on. And now I think the ERJC itself is in, to be fair to the work, is wondering about its own role because it was a driver of those recommendations earlier, and now a lot of that work's happening in the schools themselves. And so now ERJC is wondering, what is it that we're here to do? It's a very fair and legitimate question, and we're thrilled that we still have such commitment from community stakeholders as well as students and staff members. And I imagine that's going to be some of the work in the coming years to figure out, what is it that ERJC can be moving forward?
Yeah. Agreed. No, 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 it's, no, it's well said and important and true. So looking ahead to, to next year, we are looking at consultants, and we do actually have a consultant coming to our admin retreat. And she is a known author and scholar and kind of trainer in this area. We've had the chance to look at what she did as a keynote speaker in the region at a neighboring district. And an auditorium full of about 300 teachers was mesmerized for 90 minutes and really just prepares teachers to be able to respond to situations that cause fear and anxiety in people and to really say that you can't remain silent when you see something happen. She's traveled around the country and spoken to thousands of students. And over and over, no matter where she goes, she finds that students say, I know my teacher really cares about me, and there are times when I wish my teacher wasn't silent. I wish my teacher would have been able to have the bravery to do this. And so she tells these very heartfelt stories about what she sees around the country. She uses a lot of images to kind of grab your attention and a lot of learning to go in and to kind of change your lens on how you might view the world, how you might view a situation, and to kind of get over that fear of not, of remaining silent in situations that happened in the hallway, that happened in the classroom just naturally because with kids and with colleagues as well. We talked about how to include more student voice, whether that's through, we have thought about surveys and thought maybe that's not the greatest idea, but focus groups sitting with students from around the district about their experience. Specific, there are questions you can ask about students' sense of belonging without asking about, do you belong? And we know that, you know, students will be more likely to sit down with us and have those kind of conversations. We've talked about qualitative and quantitative data, I just kind of alluded to that. And as Andrew mentioned, the role and goals for ERJC, I mean, that's a really big question. As you mentioned, Andrew, going forward, and we have some time to meet over the summer with, I'd say, the ERJC leadership as well as students, you know, to meet over the summer and to really think carefully about next year and what that might look like, not to put together every single minute of every single meeting next year, but to think of next year as a blueprint and think what we might accomplish, what we might do as a mix of consultants, is it a mix of learning, is it a mix of hearing from students? So lot to, a lot on the docket to be thought of and talked about over the summer and into next year. And of course, as, as Ray comes on board, we'll, we'll obviously want to have his insight and opinion on this as well.
Thank you, Neil and Alex and Julia. And that brings us to the final slide where we just ask the board if you have any questions. And we thank you, and we thank you for supporting this work. Your support is very meaningful to us.
Since I'm sitting in Bill's chair, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go the data route. This is really fascinating and such rewarding and such important work. I really appreciate all the efforts and I appreciate the collective thinking around DEIB and also ERJC, and obviously they're overlapped, but I like that we've sort of separated them a little bit here. I guess my question is to, how do we know we're being successful? So it's great that we have all these programs. It's wonderful to hear Andrew say, you know, ERJC was charged with moving these concepts into the school buildings, and we feel like that's happening now. But how do we, is there a way that we could measure sort of where we were or where we are versus where we will be five years from now? And are our implementations and policies effective, both in DEIB generally and ERJC specifically? Like, I do feel like we're at a juncture now with ERJC, like, okay, you know, what's the future for ERJC? And I think it's very important work, but it's a good question. And so what do we want to do and how do we measure that we're doing it? And I'm not sure who can answer that one, and it's a bit nebulous, but...
So I, I think that's a great question and something that we've been thinking about as well. And I do think that, and I think you mentioned it in one of your slides, there are surveys that are out there that are already valid, that have been around for a decade or two, and that researchers say these are really good questions to ask of students or really good questions to ask of staff around sense of belonging, right? And we, we've, I think there are pockets of that at each, at the schools in different ways. And I think where we need to think about going, and again, just to, just to state the obvious, I think we also need to consult with Ray and, and think about what kind of culture and climate surveys should we be considering, right? There, because there are organizations out there that, that will sell you a lot of different things. However, what we've come across in, in that Cobb and Cronapple book, there are readily made surveys there and, and free also just around the internet to, to gain that insight, to speak to those measurables and understand and who's belonging, who feels a sense of belonging to what extent and who's not. And then, then from there, how do you think about a vision or a strategy to address some of the, the people who don't feel that sense, right? So I think that's the work for us going forward, unless one of my colleagues feels differently.
I know, I think, I think you've said that well. I think it's always going to be a variety of different types of measures. So the, the survey that was referenced in the slides earlier that was highlighted at the middle school this year, there'll be more conversation about whether that can be applied universally. If you, if you do watch the video of the high school students speaking, you'll hear that there's some measurement in there where they'll speak about some of the ways in which they can see changes in the experience and some of the ways in which they still see the need for more change in the experience. And then the small sample that, that Alex presented of the data that the state gives back to us around disproportionality, we know that there are also ways to look at disproportionality in academic areas for all students. They are a bit more challenging for us because disproportionality works on the basis of the subgroups that you have in schools. And in some cases, our subgroups are very small. So figuring out how to make meaningful measurements with the data is challenging, but that is something that the district could take on. So it's, it's going to be a variety of different types of measures.
I think it's important, one of the things on the Sustainability Committee that we enjoy so much is having had a benchmark established back in the day and then have a comparison so that you can see over time how the, all of the engagement with the community and all of the work that we do has a very positive impact. And I'm sure that's true, but it would be really nice to, to measure it quantitatively. And I know it's, it's not quite like sustainability and greenhouse gas emissions. It's something physical that you can measure.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, I would encourage you to try to figure out a way to quickly benchmark it as something, and you can always add to it as you proceed. But thank you so much. This is wonderful. Thank you.
It may not, it may not be as much like the greenhouse gas measurements that we do in sustainability, but it might be more like how are our students embracing the need to both think about and take action around a more sustainable future? So that's, I think, I think it is comparable in that sense.
I see that.
Andrew, it was really helpful to hear you speaking about kind of where we were when ERJC started and where we are today. And I'm just always struck by how this is, work is getting really embedded and institutionalized throughout the schools at every level and that it's not just sort of an idea and a concept, but really being woven into the fabric of the schools. And I think that speaks to the sustainability of the DEI and belonging work. And, and really in a way that, I mean, from what I've heard and see is that it is, it is something that embraces everybody and is not, you know, is about sort of lifting up maybe people that often might not be included or societally aren't, but also creates room for everybody in the space. And so it's not a, like, it's not a either/or, but it's a, like a yes and proposition. So I really appreciate that and appreciate the work that ERJC has been doing and thinking about and continuing the community engagement along with the educational work that's going on.
I, I really appreciate you saying that, and I do agree that it's somewhat more systemically embedded. And I feel the need to always follow that by saying, to be fair, there are families out there who would say, my child isn't feeling that yet. And, you know, we, and that's where like ERJC and other groups can play such a valuable role for continuing to let us know where it needs to still get stronger. You know, until we get to that point, which is why I say it's forever kind of work, there'll always be more to do. But I do appreciate you saying that.
That is very much what I was going to say with respect to the, one of the roles that ERJC continues to play is that I think it is really important and helpful that there is a place where periodically, family members, whether it's parents or students themselves, are in the presence of building leaders and central office administrators to speak, you know, on their own terms about their experiences in the district and for all of us to learn from those experiences and think about how, how that can make its way into the future evolution of the work that we see when we're in the buildings, whether on our learning walks or through these presentations. You know, so that's, that's at least one valuable role that ERJC continues to play for us.
Thank you very much, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for that. Appreciate it. So we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the presentation and discussion regarding the LES Shady Lane Evaluation Committee. So, Ray, now if you want to take it away?
Sure.
Thank you. Go to the next slide, please. So I do want to express our, our deep gratitude to all of our administration, my fellow board members, and our amazing community members who have stepped up to serve on this committee to help us find a solution to these two properties. The conversations that we had in our meetings to date have been very thoughtful and led directly to the information that's being presented here tonight. It was a very collaborative team and engaged, and our community members especially brought a lot of thoughtfulness to our discussions and have been doing their own research in preparation for our meeting. So we really appreciate all of these members imposing our committee. Next, our agenda for this will be, first, we're going to talk about the Shady Lane background. We're going to present our Shady Lane recommendations and the remaining questions to be answered. Then we're going to review the LES background, present our potential uses for the property, and then discuss charge for continued work on the LES school. So the Shady Lane property was originally, the great-grandfather, the inventor of the Ferris wheel, lived in the property in 1782. The property then came to KLSD by a donation by the Newman family. It was last used as the district office in the 2015-16 school year. The building has been winterized in order to minimize upkeep. The school district maintains the fire alarms and property. We have our wonderful custodian staff daily visits over to the property to make sure everything's in order. But there is no kitchen in the property and the third floor is unstable at this time. And there is no historic listing on the, on the property that we've been able to find. Next slide, so our recommendation for Shady Lane, as we've brought up in previous meetings, is to remove the building and preserve the land. Our initial estimate of costs was approximately $325,000 to remove the building. So tonight, we are here to ask for authority to perform the State Historic Preservation Office confirmation that the building can be removed. We would need to most likely conduct a Phase One environmental assessment, and then we would need to obtain bids for the removal of the property. We did talk about some potential future uses, and those uses could include a pond, field trip location for other elementary schools, field space for Meadow Pond Elementary, and overflow parking. We think that this could be some good work for the Sustainability Committee to take on in, in future years. So those are, that's our recommendation. We do have some follow-up questions that would need to be answered before we can proceed, and that would be whether or not the district has any responsibility to memorialize the gift from the Newman family, which is a very generous gift, providing a reserve to put in annual contributions for the removal fund. We're also discussing options for our first responders in the community to use the building for training, police fire EMT for potential uses for live training. And then it has been recommended by our attorneys to post the property for no trespassing in order to increase safety and reduce liability risks. Before we move on to Lewisboro, do I have any, any questions about Shady Lane and the So Lewisboro Elementary was originally built in 1940. Is it the oldest elementary school or is it Katona?
Yeah. Sixty-seven. They're sixty-seven. Oh, Katona's Katona.
No, Katona.
So, second oldest. There have been several additions to the property over the years. There was a significant overhaul of the building in 1997, and the gym was built in 2003, and the gym is actually in wide use today throughout the community. The declining enrollment led to the closure of the school after the 2013-2014 school year, and those savings actually enabled us to move to a full-day kindergarten, which the community really appreciated being able to do that. So, any path forward for Lewisboro Elementary, other than selling the land, will require expenditure in the seven digits. And some of the options we have would be leaving Lewisboro as it is today in any of the proposals that we'll discuss on the next slide. The committee is still considering which proposal would make use of the property in the best manner to further our mission and vision, and we're here tonight to present you with those potential uses and to have you let us know which ones you would like us to look into, if one, two, or all of them. Because the cost and property restrictions, we are presenting several proposals, but we will need authority from the full board in order to further the work. Significant maintenance is needed on the building, so it is a rather urgent task that we look into how to preserve the property or what to do with the property. And then, so the next slide, some of the potential uses that the committee came up with is a universal pre-K space, solar arrays, which would further our sustainability work, a long-term lease with some entity to use the property, converting it to a natural environment space that could be enjoyed by the community, and a potential sports complex. Anybody who has children in the athletic programs here know that short space fields often causes late practices and a lot of moving pieces. So each of these proposals, though, require some additional questions that would need to be addressed. You know, there's water quality issues, there's roof repairs, there's the PFOS issues, there's the water treatment center on, on the property. So all of these things need to be looked into. So on the next slide, we were trying to set out a matrix of impact of different, of the proposals. You can see we have all of the uses on the left hand, and then on the top, demolishing, salvaging, or selling the property. These are all different things that we've put up for your consideration while you think about, you know, what, what you would want us to look into. And then each, in order to answer each of these questions, you know, we have to look at costs, the regulations and laws, and the feasibility of use. So it will require our administration, who are always, already hard at work, to put additional time aside in order to work with consultants and community in order to do so. So we, we asked tonight that... with consultants and community in order to do so. So we we ask tonight that you think about these proposals, consider which ones you would like us to look into, and provide authority for the committee to move forward. As far as, at this point, we have asked the committee members to continue to serve on it because I think we have a really good group. But so we also ask that you allow us to have those community members continue to serve with us. Any questions about the Lewisboro?
So thank you. And maybe, Andrew, it would be helpful to go back to the slide of just sort of the that slide, either of those, either that one or. Yeah. So I think part of what happened as we were working with the committee was each initially, obviously, there was some thinking around whether we would remove the building from the property. It's a very costly endeavor. And so when we thought like it would be important to think about, how do we combine removing the property from the building with something else that would really add to the school community in a meaningful way? And so these proposals are really thinking about different ways we could do that, whether it's through creating a universal pre-K campus, additional sports fields, and the use of the gym, solar arrays that would help contribute to our sustainability work, as well as natural environment, which would provide opportunities maybe for our students to be on the on the campus there, working in community gardens, or using the natural environment to do research. And we still have an option to think about a long-term lease that would place more of the responsibility for the upkeep and maintenance of the building onto a tenant, where it would alleviate the costs to the district, but it would be a pretty significant lift for whoever that tenant might be. So each of these things has different components that require more research. And, you know, so that, in order to be able to have a committee actually recommend one of them, there's administrative questions that need to be answered, feasibility questions that need to be answered. So I think, you know, I think, if possible, it would be helpful to perhaps reduce the number of things that we would research. But I think the committee is also fully thinking that if we need to research all of them, that would be an opportunity as well. So that's the direction that committee is looking for.
Add emphasis to a point Lorraine made really well, that there is no path, there's no simple path forward on any of these, and that it's it's expensive, no matter which direction the board ultimately chooses to go. Even when the slide said, leave things as they are, there is no really leaving things as they are because of the condition of the building. Leaving things as they are would involve significant expenditure just to try to maintain the status quo, and then doing anything else also requires significant expenditure. So it's a really complicated problem for the district. And I think also just to highlight that it was several years ago that the Finance Committee made its original recommendation, which for the for the district to maintain the land. And I think this committee at least put on the table the idea of it could be that none of these are really financially feasible. And then does that have to come back as a consideration as to whether the district can maintain the land? So that's just something, again, for future. But it's it's a thought that's out there.
I would I would love to have the committee look into the universal pre-K. I think there's a huge, you know, we saw there's 120 applications for universal pre-K right now. And I know there's expense, you know, feasibility of doing it, but I think there's there's a huge, huge demand out there. And might as well take a look at what the cost is to make something like that happen. We are getting money from the state that could subsidize, you know, the 5,400 per student. And maybe there's a way to make it work.
I was curious if these proposals are exclusive of one another. Like, could you, you could have a universal pre-K and a sports complex and solar arrays and a natural space, right? So I mean, not that, I think all of the use options are very interesting to me to make some use of it. I am curious, I mean, so and I think a universal pre-K, the interest that we saw speaks widely to it. I am curious with that of the cost component, when we say they all involve seven figures, is it one seven-figure number? Is it 10 seven-figure? And the difference between those are significant. And so I think a little bit more information, I won't be here, but for other people to help make that decision, I think is useful and compared to what the current, the do-nothing price is.
So we're very fortunate that we have architects, we have construction people on this committee that we had, we had one committee member kind of do a back of the envelope. And he's like, oh, I think, I think, you know, that the cost that our initial estimate may be too high. I think, you know, we could get it for less. But remember, the initial estimate was a very high level of number. So, you know, we are looking at seven figures, I think, no matter what. I think, you know, there was an agreement that it would cost seven to remove the entire property. So, you know, but whether that's higher or lower, you know, it's still a significant number that may require us to look at a bond. And if we do a bond, we would want to be able to incorporate something that was useful to further the mission and and values of this school district.
And I do like, I do also like that there is the option, which we hadn't really considered before, of selling. Like, if, I think, just having that as a comparison of not that we have to do something, but keeping it on the table to then affirmatively, I hope we affirmatively choose to do something with it. And it's certainly going to be easier to get community support for a bond if there is something that we are doing, not just dismantling. But I, I mean, these, these all sound exciting and things that would be beneficial to the community and to the school community in particular. So I'm interested in seeing where you go with it and also the numbers.
I think we need to, we need to weigh the cost of doing nothing to the cost of getting out of being the landlord of LES. I think we have to figure out that number. So if the maintenance of that building is going to cost us, I don't know, I heard a number of $5 million to fix the roof, right? If it's going to cost us $5 million in the next five years, and if by removing the building it costs us, I'll say, $3 million, well, then there's a $2 million savings by removing the building. And and we should start there and say, okay, like, you know, how much does it cost to keep it? How much does it cost to remove it? And then, okay, now that we've removed it, we probably don't remove all of it because of the 2003 addition, and it's a gym, and it's highly used, and we can do a lot with it. So maybe you keep that that piece of it, the newest piece, which I think has some toilet facilities and maybe an office or two. And then, once you've established that, then say, okay, now, if we were to add universal pre-K, how much would that cost? If we were now to add a solar array on the roof, how much would that cost? Or don't add the universal pre-K, just the array, or just the environmental, just the sports complex. We should explore all of those options. But I I think, in my opinion, in order to do any of them, you probably have to knock down the older pieces of that building, remove them.
Yes.
You can't put a universal pre-K into that existing structure. It's, we're out of code. We're not going to, we're not going to get back into code. So for me, we should establish the cost pretty tightly of how much water would take to get rid of that building entirely, except for the gym, maybe. Maybe we keep that nice 2003 component out there, and then use that as our baseline and say, okay, just by doing that, we're going to save X number of dollars by not having to maintain the roof, not having to maintain the building. And then say, okay, that sounds like a reasonable proposition. What else could we do with? To me, there are two different, two different propositions. We can't afford to maintain a building that we're not using. So that's a problem. And then, okay, now, now that we have that nice piece of space in the middle of town, what do we want to do with it? Hmm, that's, that gives us all sorts of options. That's my opinion. So I mean, I do think that we have to establish that cost of demolition as a baseline.
Agreed. And I think that's ultimately where the committee landed, was that cost is probably going to be a cost that we on our own couldn't add into the budget without a bond.
Even that cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Where would we get the, where would, well, I don't know what the cost is, but we know we would either have to do that or maintain.
I mean, the original proposal, just based on solely on square footage only, so not a detail, was $4 million. So, or, you know, so that's, that's all heavy. And so even if we were able to contribute to, because we can actually make a reserve for this, but how many years would it take us? How many, and the building would just continue to become...
But is the same true for maintenance? I mean, do we have a maintenance reserve for that building that we can tap to maintain the roof if we decided to go that route? But why would we go that route?
Right, exactly. So so then, the idea is, if if we would need to create a bond for the removal of the building, what Ilana was just saying, which is, it would be nice to create a complete bond that would include the removal of the building and then a future use that would really add value to the community and present that as a as a single bond.
Yeah, yeah, I don't disagree. But I think at a minimum, we have to figure out, are we going to maintain it, or are we going to knock it down? We're going to do one of those two things, no matter what.
I think the committee would agree. And I think, I think what the committee is looking for tonight is permission from the board, authority from the board, to now do the necessary work, which which in and of itself is going to require some expenditure to get to more specific costs. Because as much expertise as there is on the committee, we're going to need some designs and some architectural work and some engineering to understand exactly the comparisons you've just talked about. So there's going to have to be some expenditure to get closer to the answer that the board is looking for.
So that's what, I mean, so the authority is really for the committee in its work to task the administration to to hire whatever consultants we need to get those numbers for us to, you know, talk through. So for example, you know, if the, if the building is going to have, if we're going to have a building, and it's going to have people in it, then we have to look at what are the requirements for treating the water. And so, and if we keep the gym and maybe a small portion of one of the wings, then the plant for electricity and heat is not, doesn't exist anymore. If we didn't, so then we'd have to build that. So there's, there's layers and layers of things. So that, so I, it sounds like to me that all of these ideas are interesting. And so...
My worry is that we're making a leap from, we probably need a bond to pay for the demolition. And therefore, if we're going to float a bond, we should also think about what all the possibilities are. And that there's a cost associated with that thought process, just saying, ah, what would a solar array look like? Well, that's going to cost you to figure that out, not to do it, just to figure it out. So for me, the baseline should be, how much will it cost the district to close down, to demolish LES? How much is that? Because we know we're, we know we have a bill for $5 million to fix the roof.
No, so, no.
It's not that high.
500 to 500,000 to a million.
What you heard a few minutes ago was, we have a rough, we have a rough estimate of what it costs to do to demolish the building and have there be nothing there. And it's a, it's a very high cost just to do that. So that's when the committee moved to, well, if it's going to require a bond to do something like that, and it doesn't necessarily seem likely that a community would support a bond that's strictly going to demolish a building and then have no replacement for it. And that's when the thinking started to move to, well, what's a vision that a community could get behind?
In order to float a bond.
Yeah. And each of these proposals, we actually have fleshed out, you know, initial questions. And when we started fleshing out the initial questions, we're realizing it's time of our administrators, it's, it's money to have the proper advisors on board. And we realized, you know, we really need the full support of the board in order to authorize any of these works. But we really did try to drill down into each one to figure out if anything was viable without additional work. And unfortunately, it's, it's not.
And and step one is getting a more, rather than just a per-square-foot price for the demolition. But the per-square-foot price came from our architects who have worked in lots of districts in lots of places and know what it costs approximately to demolish a building. And that was the four.
Yeah, I just can't make the leap from, hey, we have a problem that we don't have the money to maintain the building. And now we're saying we don't have the money to knock it down either. So therefore, let's, let's think about things that we could, like, we don't have any high demand. Maybe universal pre-K is coming down the path, and maybe that's something that we need to do. But we're, it's almost like we're trying to think of things, hey, what could we do? And there's a cost associated with that. And there's a substantial bond that would be associated with that. We've just floated a bond. I don't know. It feels like we're getting ahead of ourselves by doing that.
But that's, again, and I think, I think the committee is asking for the opportunity to just take the thinking further.
Yeah.
And and see, and see what, I think you're right about what, what are, what are the comparatives, and then come back. It's going to take some months to be able to come back with more concrete proposals than the board would be considering, you know, which makes the most sense.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no numbers here, right? So it's very hard to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Generating any numbers requires.
Yeah. Just on that, I'm curious, I think it makes sense to authorize money for the committee to explore it further. I think, if possible, the time bound is so that there's a proposal that comes back in advance, maybe of the budget next year, so that anything that needs to kind of move forward, you know, just, just so we can, not just, we're thinking into perpetuity, but to give a little bit of pressure and time boundedness to it. So I that, I propose that. And then I think, building off of what Rory was saying, it sounds like we need the demolition cost, we need the clarity on the maintenance cost. I think we also need the sell cost, like, what, what would, what, what would we anticipate getting if we actually sold the property? Just to have the kind of all those numbers on the table. I know, I know we don't want to, and I think that's there, but I think it's, it's just, it's helpful to have that into a firm, like, we're not doing that, and we're making an investment in this for these reasons, to real, just to make that kind of full analysis of it, I think would be useful. And I guess, how much, and it sounds like we're like, you're asking for soft cost money for doing more exploration and time and administrative time.
Yeah. Yeah. And so I think at our last meeting, we estimated perhaps we could have some answers by October.
Yeah.
Timeframe-ish.
The resolution in front of the board tonight speaks to it.
Does it say October?
October.
Remember, if we put that in there. So hoping for October would be our, our push. The committee indicated they would be willing to meet once a month over the summer if, you know, we got the resolution from the board to move forward.
And I think there's an opportunity to do, at some point when we have more clarity around some of these numbers, I think there's an opportunity to do some, like, community input around, maybe, maybe we're wrong about what the community support. Maybe the community would gladly support a bond just to demolish the property and have it be a grass field. And if that's the case, and that's the, you know, least expensive route, then maybe that's the route we take. We'll have to see. Yeah. So I just think we need, we need first the number of, just like a more specific number around the demolition of the building, demolition based on different parts of the buildings, you know, like, there's probably going to be three different prices for demolition, one for the entire building, one for the building leaving just the gym, and one for the building and leaving a wing and the gym. So there's three different demolition narratives that we could consider. And then there's potentially some narratives around future use. So there'll be probably like eight different prices that we're going to have.
Let's not do so much analysis that we need to float a bond just for the analysis.
Do you have any idea how much the cost is going to be to do this research?
No.
Now, we would, you know, we could reach out to KG and DNC.
Okay. They'd be the ones probably doing it.
Yes. And also even maybe there's some Triton, too, but together, they could, our construction manager, I don't know if they could work together and just really...
Would that not have to go to bid?
Well, KG and D wouldn't need to go out to bid. I don't know if we'd have to.
For demolition work?
Oh, for the demolition work? Yes. I mean, for analysis.
And Triton is here for the construction management, and certainly that's their priority. But they are very knowledgeable in terms of construction, and while they're here, might be able to help us with some of the thinking around other things.
This might be a head, but I was also curious if there's any state or federal money that might be able to be kind of woven into this, or if that's part of this, at this moment, or if that's kind of a later exploration.
I mean, it would be later, but as far as building aid is available for renovation for pre-K classroom space is now available. So that is something that would be available. I don't know. There, I've looked a little bit into preservation of, you know, just land, land preservation. And a lot of times, it's more in economically disadvantaged areas that the monies are focused on. But that was like a quick, kind of Google, you know, search of not in-depth brand analysis. So.
We also have the issue that the property is no longer listed as a school, wouldn't I said? So that would be another area we would have to look back into.
If we decide to run a school.
So there's some other options of maybe leasing it to another company to run the pre-K there. So, I mean, we did kind of kick around a lot of these ideas, trying to figure out ways that we could afford to do it.
Would it be required to be a school if it was a pre-K situation?
So it's, my understanding is, if we were running it, it would... So it's, my understanding is if we were running it, it would be, but if we leased the property to a provider.
Okay. It would not be.
It might not.
It might not be. I feel like there's so much analysis to be done here, like, we're down a path here that, you know, we closed that school because we don't have the enrollment to support it, and I know 180 additional pre-K kids, but we have also said that we do have capacity at the middle school and other places. So I think there's a lot of analysis that has to be done here before we try to open another school.
Agreed. 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 All right, so we have two resolutions related to this, so I'm just going to go out of order, but Resolution 8.05 is the, is the board's resolution to give authority to do the evaluation required for Shady Lane, which was in the beginning part of the presentation. And then Resolution 8.04 is the updating of the committee charge to allow us to continue to work through October just solely on the LES property, because we're going to separate out Shady Lane. So those are the two resolutions. 8.04 is for the committee charge, and 8.05 is for the evaluation.
Can I just ask one last question?
Yeah, of course.
I appreciate what you just said. Do we have any idea of the dollar amount that we're authorizing the, the LES committee to spend to do this analysis or research? Do we have any idea what we're, what we're approving?
I think, I think tonight we do not, but I think it's fair to say that if it reaches a certain scale, it'll have to come back to the board for further authorization. We have, we have, we have a threshold.
Pretty much every amendment that we do to KG and D's contract, we bring to the board, or, so they would propose, they'd bring us a proposal, and we would bring it, we'd put a resolution before the board for that.
Okay.
So you'll see it before.
For that, so it would become.
Okay, thanks.
But I think one of the reasons we felt it was important to bring this work to all of you at this juncture is because also there's administrative time that's going to be required. So even, we can't quantify that right here at the table either, but it is the board's commitment then, and the board's authority to ask the administration to take steps down this path. We don't have a number to put to that either, but it's just sort of acknowledging that this is going to be part of the work that, that we're asking the administration to take on. So I just wanted to be explicit about that, too.
No, that's a good point. I mean, just to use the sustainability analogy again, we also had work related to solar arrays that we deferred, because for this exact reason, we didn't have resource capacity among the administrative team, and we said, okay, we'll kind of sit back on that work that we'd like to do. So for sure, this is now engaging, but it's only for a four-month period, so.
And I think this is also, this, these questions have now been out there since 2013, 2014 school year, and at some point, I think we have to commit the resources to bring it to some kind of resolution. And I think, I don't know if this is the right moment to do that, but we're proposing that this is the moment. And, you know, I think it's, I think it just requires a lift by the administration and potentially some, some funds to do some research, but I think it's something we just have to at some point buckle down and do, and do it.
But I think what I'm hearing you saying is that you're looking for authority to engage with the vendors who would then come back to the board with their proposals, and we would have an opportunity to reconsider whether it's worth spending that.
Yes, 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 a hundred percent, yes.
That's fine.
Yes. Okay.
Can I move both motions?
Can you move two resolutions at once? Sure. So Ilana is making a motion to move 8.04 and 8.05. Can I get a second from Bill? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. Great, thank you. Thank you for the discussion. So I don't see that anyone signed up for public comment, but I'm, fortunately on my laptop, I'm looking on my phone. Can you verify that, Kim? No one, right? Okay, great. So, is it anyone here? No? Okay, great. So we are going to move the consent agenda. I did just want to welcome Jamie Nedwick, I don't want to say it improperly, Jamie Nedwick, who is one of the three professional staff members that are on item 13.01 on the agenda, so thank you very much for joining us tonight and welcome.
Jamie will be the new library media specialist at Katona Elementary come September, so, so welcome, Jamie.
Yes, oh, welcome to Jamie. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight to be here, we appreciate that. And with that, I just don't believe there's any other items that need to be pulled out on the consent agenda. Would someone like to move it? Move by Lorraine? Second by Bill? All those in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. Great. In our donations tonight, we have very exciting donations this evening, so I'm going to just go through the resolution 15.01, start with two, which is a donation from Gossip Brothers Nursery of a Merlot red bud tree, and with the value of $250 for the John Jay High School Science Department carbon sequestration class. And we have another donation from Florence White, which is a monetary donation of $500 for the Donna White Memorial Scholarship. And we're very excited to accept a donation from the John Jay Booster Club that is going to help the district to install a significant scoreboard display in our high school gym. I'm sure that if you've been in other districts around the community, you've seen these scoreboards that are really multimedia, allows to have an opportunity to present things in our gym space, not just for sports, but for theater and video, and it's a, just a really exciting thing to have that. It's something that the kids see in other districts, and I think we're going to be really excited about.
And our students can create content to display on it.
To display on that.
Huge opportunity.
Exactly. And this has been a fundraising effort for several years under the John Jay Boosters since 2020, so thank you to everyone who's been a part of those efforts, whether it's been buying, buying food at the concession stand, or buying merchandise from our John Jay Boosters. Thank you so much to, you know, everyone who's supported this so that we could make it happen. It's really exciting. Thank you to the Gallaghers and the Elrats, who have been our presidents of the boosters in those years. And with that, we are going to accept.
Can I just also add, add thanks to Christian McCarthy, who's here with us tonight, and who's been integral in mediating and collaborating and making sure that this work comes together, and working with our business office also, and thanks to Lisa. A lot of work went on there around making sure that this could happen in all the appropriate ways, and we are very excited.
Yes, so the donation is from the John Jay Booster Club for the scoreboard system, which includes a 17-foot by 10-foot LED scoreboard display, LES scoreboard display, two LED shot clocks, the, the scores clocks that are currently in the gym will be moved to the middle school, and then we have a one-year software subscription for the, for the entire system, and it also covers the freight costs. And this donation is for $116,200 from the John Jay Boosters, so thank you very much.
Yeah, it was truly, I kind of just, it was a truly community grassroots effort. And, you know, when I, my husband, Pete and I first took over the booster, is the first conversation I had with, with Chris is, you know, what's our, what's our goal? And he says, I've been, something I've been wanting to do for a while.
Yeah.
And so it really began with his vision, and just the community members from, you know, the donations and the snack shack and the football, eight and, you know, $5 here, $10 here, you know, $5,000 donations, $2,000 donations. It just, it was an overwhelming show of support for our district, and it just is unbelievable. And I, I do want to make a special thank you to my husband, who I think flipped 10,000 hamburgers in order to get, get us over the finish line. So I would be remiss for not thanking him, because he took every single one of my crazy ideas, that I had to raise this money, and he just helped me run with it, so. And then Chris gave, and his team gave us all the support we ever asked for in order to make everything come to fruition, so.
Yeah, it's exciting. Again, I, we see them in a lot of the other schools, we're excited to have one. So with that, would someone like to make a motion to move item 15.01? Move by Lorraine? Second by Marjorie? All those in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. Thank you. So for dialogue, I don't know if anyone has any anything, I know Ilana wanted to talk about a few things. Anyone else?
So, this is my last meeting tonight, and I just wanted to say that it's been such a pleasure to serve on the board. And I remember when I first joined, hearing people say that this was the best service that people do, and it really, it really has been. It's been amazing to get to see the inside of the school and to see even more this year, moving in as the vice president. And as I said the other week, it has only made me feel better about the district. I think sometimes when you get a little more involved, you see things you might not like, but really, it has only shown me the caring of each and every person that's involved in the district, from our maintenance staff, to our support staff, to our teachers, to our administrators, to our board of ed. And hearing the students, every time they do presentations, sharing what they find amazing about the schools, and also what they find challenging, and the really, the commitment of all our district to uplift the voices of students and help them find their voice so that they can be contributing members to society. So it really, I joined because I thought this was a very functioning district, and I wanted to get to work with all of you, and Andrew especially, to get to learn and to be in that role. And I think it's only gotten to another level. Over the time, I, I've appreciated it even more, and I'm excited to see where we go with our new superintendent, and it's been a real pleasure to get to do, like, all the work of this board by getting to be involved in the superintendent search, too. And so I just had a couple of words for everybody. Kim, I just want to say thank you for welcoming me, from getting the petitions at the beginning, explaining the process, really making it work easy, welcoming, and also just always being there to help us work through so many scheduling challenges, to get seven people to come together on a meeting, but really making sure the board has everything it needs to function, and also helping to run our elections so that everybody can participate and have a voice in this. Lisa, it's been a pleasure getting to work with you and seeing your commitment and your expertise in our finances, and really making sure that we're keeping fiscally responsible. And when you don't know the answer, really looking into it and getting back to us, and I've appreciated getting to learn alongside you. Alex, I really appreciate your commitment to making sure that every student has access to a fair and equitable education, and bringing your expertise from your districts before this to us, and holding us to a very high standard, and it's been great to get to work with you. And Neil, the work that you bring in, I, I love talking with you about books, hearing what you're reading, and the, the commitment you have to DAB, and especially how you brought it into hiring and thinking about that. I've really appreciated learning that from you. And Julia, I look forward to seeing even more of what you're doing, but your commitment to supporting our educators and getting to the next level has been really amazing, and I'm excited to keep working with you, many more years that I'll be in the district, so. I feel like it was just the beginning. And to my colleagues on the board, Bill, it's been great getting to know you, and I appreciate your curiosity and openness and willingness to learn and try new things. And also, I've appreciated hearing your, your experience that you bring, especially on the finance committee, and on, you know, when we're working through the pre-K and thinking creatively about that, it was great to get to see you and see your expertise. Lorraine, it's been great to see you. I feel like I introduced, saw you more in the audience at first, and now getting to be on the board together was a pleasure, and hearing, I really appreciate your expertise as an attorney that you bring to the board. And so that legal lens, and also the parent lens, and also just as somebody who cares and holds the district for so many years, and to come on in this role has been really great. Rory, I have appreciated you holding us to our values and speaking up and questioning whenever you have a question, and I think that's really great. And Marjorie, you have been on the board for so long, and I, your commitment to the district and the care that you show for each and every student, for the district, meeting the district where it is, and also anticipating where we might go, and that sort of like holistic view that you have of it, has really been a great pleasure to, to get to see and to work with you, and I'm glad that you're continuing and holding it down. And Julia, it's been a pleasure working together this year, and I appreciate the collaborative nature that we've been able to work on this together, and again, your commitment and caring for all the students in the district, and for, for making sure that when we're running our meetings and when we're doing the work, that the students are at the center, and that we're also really including the whole community. That's been really beautiful. And Andrew, I, I think I really did join the board because I wanted to get to work with a leader like you, and I have a, I learned a lot about the time of, the timeline of a school district, and the value of a deliberative process. And I think I came in wanting to things to be faster and quicker, and it's really shown me a, a different, a different way of thinking about that, and it certainly added to, for me professionally, and your calm nature, your willingness to really hear everybody and consider all sides, and really make this a learning culture, like, the whole environment, I think, it, it permeates throughout the district and also allows everybody's voice to come to the table, and I think that's what the purpose of public education is, and what we're teaching people to be good democratic citizens, and that you embody that here. And so it's really been great to be part of that, and I will miss this, and it's been really wonderful, and I look forward to being in the audience at future meetings. So thank you.
We hope to see you there for audience participation.
I will come for three minutes.
No public comments, though.
Three minutes. Me and Bill.
We've got the clock.
So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ilana.
I, I did have something, and first I just want to say thank you, Ilana, for recognizing us each individually, and for really sort of speaking from the heart to recognize the humanity and dignity of each of us at the table. That was really lovely and not expected, so I really thank you for that. And it's somewhat consistent with what I just wanted to say briefly, if you don't mind, I'm going to look ahead and look backwards. I want to look ahead by saying that I feel a responsibility to report out from the parent council meeting that we held the day after our last board meeting, because tomorrow is our Septo end-of-year festival celebration, so I invite everybody on behalf of Septo and Parent Council to Lewisboro Town Park at 4:00 PM, and hope to see you there. And we had opportunity to celebrate Andrew, Parent Council brought a lovely cake, and it was a very nice end-of-year meeting, so anyway, looking forward to tomorrow. And then looking backwards, just to our last meeting, which was our opportunity to celebrate both newly tenured staff and retirees. I want to start by thanking Julia, because you might not even remember this, but eight years ago, it was a suggestion that you made, I think when you were sitting in this chair, that wouldn't it be nice to honor retirees in a celebratory manner comparable to the manner in which we honor tenure candidates? And I have felt very fortunate, since that suggestion was implemented, that our celebration has only grown and expanded to include individuals who have given so much to the school district. And I really was struck by just how beautiful our last board meeting was. And also, for full disclosure, back in January, the night that Andrew announced his retirement, I went back and I watched a little bit of the video, maybe at high speed, but nevertheless, I watched a little bit of the video from when we appointed him back in 2015. And it's good that this is our penultimate meeting of the year, because I keep going back and watching things, and I just wanted to say one more thing about having gone back a little bit in time, which is to say that in September of 2015, when you were pretty new, you provided a framework for public education in which you discussed a history of sometimes seemingly contradictory forces acting upon our schools. You talked with us about what was versus what will be, standards and standardization versus individualization, federal and state control versus local control, accountability versus autonomy, and the fundamentals versus the whole child. And I would like to say thank you for providing this useful lens for the work of our school board, and for your leadership in helping our governance team navigate internal and external forces with collegiality, equanimity, humility, humor, thoughtfulness, and respect for the humanity and dignity and well-being of our amazing staff and students. And I want to share also, because tonight was our opportunity to appoint Ray, that while I anticipate you're going to be very different leaders for our district, for your different, different individuals, I think what impressed all of us was a resounding commitment there as well to the dignity and humanity of every student and every staff member, that really does create a feeling of hopefulness and continuity with your leadership. So I wanted to share that. I want to also recollect that during your presentation, you advised us that we must continuously be listening for what is most meaningful and important for our school community, and in what proportion. And I wanted to say that looking back to the last meeting and all of the beautiful words that so many administrators and staff members and the cabinet on Andrew's behalf, and Julia presiding over the meeting, it couldn't have been more of a pleasure to listen to what our community has to say. And whether it feels like a pleasure in the moment, or it's painful in the moment, you can trust that we're going to continue listening, our community can trust that we're going to continue listening. I thank you for introducing us to Paul I thank you for introducing us to Paul Mortz, A Look at Our Schools, a book for the thinking citizen back in September of 2015, and to more contemporary scholarship and resources that continually help to clarify our understanding and thinking with respect to external and internal forces acting upon us and how we can best navigate them as we strive to continually improve the educational experiences provided in KLSD. Thank you for building on our strengths, terrific students, teachers, staff, and tremendous parent and community support, and for implementing both structural and subtle changes that benefit our school community and will continue to define your legacy. It's been a privilege and an honor to work with you. I thank you for unifying and strengthening KLSD. I remember the night that we appointed you and speaking with you and Wendy and feeling as if maybe we were taking a library book out on loan. And I think tonight, we are putting that book back on the shelf. And wishing you all the very best in your next chapter. And please remember, the students are watching. Thank you. And thank you for your indulgence to my board colleagues and administrative staff.
Thank you.
That was really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am still coming back for one more meeting.
I know. It's a long goodbye. You won't be hearing from me again at reorg, or at next week's party.
Well, I think on those two lovely notes, I'd like to, if anyone wants to make a motion to adjourn, motion by Lorraine, seconded by Bill? All those in favor?
Aye.
Six zero. Great, thank you so much. Oh, I didn't do future meetings.
Oh.
Oh, there is. July 2nd.
Yeah.
Which is our reorg meeting. Sorry, July 2nd. It's a Tuesday, so it's an unusual day of the week for us to have a meeting, but Thursday is July 4th that week. So we're going to meet on Tuesday, the 2nd, here at the high school for our reorganizational meeting. Sorry, and that's at 7:00? Oh, no.
No, it's early.
New time, sorry.
TBD.
TBD. So just stay tuned, everyone who's watching this meeting at home, because we're going